Okay, you're live tonight.
All right, sounds good. Well, welcome everybody to January 4th Planning Commission meeting for the city of Hood River. We have a quorum of the Planning Commission here tonight. The order of events tonight is that we're going to talk a little bit more about the middle housing discussion that we had last time. There's also some meeting minutes to approve. Dustin, though, did you get those out to us? Or those ones from last time?
Not working. Okay, I'm sorry. Do you do not have access to those minutes last time, from last time? This would be the last meeting's minutes.
Okay, yeah, no, I have those. Okay, I just wondered if there were any new ones. Okay. So we have those two items on the agenda tonight. It's not a legislative, it's not a quasi judicial matter, so we don't have a formal audience participation. But I would like to make sure we take some time for tonight's discussion to get some input from our audience. So I would, I was thinking about setting up a bit of a, kind of a framework for tonight, where we'll have our planning director give a presentation on some of the work that he has done and some of the updates that he is doing. We can ask him questions and then if we could hear from the public and then come back into our own deliberation. I don't think tonight's call should take us longer than two hours. So if we aim to wrap it up by 7:30, I think that would be a good amount of discussion and give us a, a reason for being crisp with our comments. Sounds good. Anybody have any issues with that?
Sounds good.
All right, so over to Dustin for, do you have any update before we get into the discussion of the evening?
No updates, other than I have a presentation queued up for item, the 2020-37 Middle Housing Code.
Okay, and then do you want to give us any roadmap in terms of where we go with our next meeting in two weeks? Or into February, is there any quasi judicial items coming up on the agenda?
Nothing imminent for, for QJR that we're aware of. It would actually need to have already been posted, so you won't have any quasi judicial on the, on the 19th would be the next meeting. And I believe that is a Tuesday.
Okay, so it is going to be moved because of the holiday?
It is going to be moved, and I would like to pick up just our legislative discussion again at that point.
Okay. All right, I'm glad I got that out of the way. All right, over to you then.
All right. Let me queue up, give me a minute. I'm hoping that you're going to see Middle Housing Code update.
I see that.
Yep.
Excellent. Let me move this to a full screen mode, you can get the, the full picture. This is picking up for our, our discussion on the 21st. Happy New Year. And again, I'm going to walk through some of the points that you discussed at the last meeting and then provide a little bit of process overview of where we go from here. So first I want to just give a little overview of the Planning Commission's role in this. Again, this is a legislative matter, so we are not, this is not a quasi judicial finding of fact matter. This is a change of essentially the city code, a broad applicability. And the role of the Planning Commission is, in that is to, in this instance, is to review the materials that you've been provided, hear public comments, and make recommendations to City Council, who essentially are the final decision makers on law changes like this. From tonight, I'm looking to take some feedback to City Council, who I want to provide an update to on January 11th. And then we'll return back to you with some of those findings and any amendments that we get from the council regarding some of the policy matters that we're going to discuss. At your last meeting, there were some issues that Planning Commission discussed. Tried to summarize them here. Some of them are more definitive than others. And we pushed a couple of issues that I'll address later on in this, such as there was a parking request. Commissioner Irving raised the issue of marketability, that if you can sell more square footage in a townhouse configuration, why, why would you even consider doing a middle housing product? At what risk does overregulating some of the size of these units come to their acceptability in the marketplace? And so I prepared some exhibits based upon what the current code allows and what some of the proposed, just regulations around some of this housing product looks like, on paper, side by side. And the other part, so within this, how do we control impacts from curb cuts? I think I generally summarized this as, generally Planning Commission was supportive, and there was a consensus on limiting the amount of curb access to the number of dwelling units. This maintains the continuity of the streetscape and helps improve some of the image. So you use the Wasco example, the Wasco townhouse examples, how unlimited curb cuts really, and the amount of garage space really start to impact the streetscape and the public domain. How to promote strong street-facing dwellings through the requirements of some design standards, forced orientation towards the street. Generally, I summarized this as worth legislating, it's worth taking a look at. So moving on to encroachments, there, we got some mixed messages regarding the encroachment from front to side, what should be permitted. I'll have a couple of slides and a couple of exhibits of what 10 feet look like in Hood River. I think that was a key, that's the current setback requirement for houses. We're going to take a look at what does that look like? Would you want to allow any further encroachment than that? And I'll use a real world example on Creekside that we looked at last week. And then the big one, are parking quantity and parking design requirements suitable? This was the one that we did push. And it has to do with trade-offs of really open space, buildable space. And what this, I'm going to come back to, what do you want City Council to know? What, what does Planning Commission have to contribute to City Council by way of the parking discussion? Further in the code, there was a question of should dwelling size and square footage be limited directly by putting a ceiling on that? Or should be controlled by some of the site development standards, requirements for parking, height requirement, landscaping and open space requirements setbacks? And consensus seemed to be, this was a, that indirect was preferred, rather than putting a hard ceiling on the square footage. Controlling that indirectly through requirements for landscaping, height limits, certain setback limits, more the floor area discussion, if not floor, not floor area ratio, but using the amenities of the site to back into the product that was desired. And then, as mentioned, the, the concern about the marketability of building to community, trade-offs of volumes to dwelling units. Again, that, will the marketplace accept or reject this because you can build more elsewhere? How should open space and landscaping standards apply? Again, we're looking for clear and objective standards, so how do you incorporate those into the code? How are they incorporated today? Is there a different approach that we'd like to see for this, these uses? And then, should accessory dwelling units be considered in the triplex duplex configuration? That seemed to be somewhat, I would call that a lukewarm response to that, and just looking at the general outcome. So back to, this was the issue that Commissioner Irving brought up. And I want to look at and provide you, hopefully this is visible, some specifications under the current code as compared to what is, what is contemplated by the, the new or the model code, or the, excuse me, the middle code. Looking at the, the sketch-up drawing, which is in blue, that's really kind of a massing design of what would be permitted in the R1 zone. R1, minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet in the city, has a 28-foot height maximum. Lot coverage is 45 to 40%, depending on whether you have bonus items such as reader garages or, or front porches. If you back out a 400-square-foot parking pad from that, which is pretty typical for a two-car that we see, you can end up with about 28 to 3100 square feet of, of coverage area. Now, seems like a single-family home, a large ambitious one. If you take that to two stories, you could end up with 4,800 square feet. If you went three stories, which is possible in Hood River under a 28-foot, you could end up with conceivably 7,200 square feet of built floor area on, on any site. Which is pretty outrageous, but it is a, it is mathematically possible. Now, looking at the duplex code, or the duplex on that same lot size, the prototype that we looked at last time for two dwelling units has about 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So much less by way of square footage. But you do notice that the, the actually amount of coverage goes up because we're trying to accommodate off-street parking as well as limited number of curb cuts. So we're moving parking to the back and limiting that number. So you see quite a bit of discrepancy between, you know, a, a forced ceiling and what is possible here. I'm going to move on. We looked at what would a cottage cluster look like in R1, on a 14,000-square-foot lot? So in this R1 configuration, you see what two mat maximum masses of a single-family home would look like in the upper, in the upper left, as compared to what a cottage cluster could look like. You see essentially up to, between 9,000 and 10,000 square feet of built floor area on two lots. Down to the cottage, this is about 7,000 square feet. So volume, you get closer by way of volume. But again, you end up with more coverage, lot coverage, because of off-street parking. And there's no penalty in the city's code for going up. So whether you have a one-story home, whether you have a two-story home or three-story home, there's no difference in lot coverage on those. It also shows up where parking becomes really punitive, because a driveway is the same as a house. Square foot for square foot, there's no difference. So when you can build a garage and you can go vertical, you really start having no impacts when it comes to a lot coverage instances here in the city. Or, excuse me, there's really no coverage difference between going up and not going up. Same thing, this was our, the, our prototype that looked at what would two detached duplexes or two dwelling units on one lot look like as compared to, again, two single-family homes, two detached duplex configurations. Again, back to massing, the, the, the amount of square footage on the conventional single-family dwelling far exceeds what you would actually end up seeing in a, in a middle housing code that's capped at a story and a half and kept at, in this instance, 1,100 square feet. Moving on to our R2 configurations. Upper left is what you could consider the typical Hood River townhouse. 28-foot tall. This is a 45% maximum lot coverage with the two parking spaces per. The total developable area typically ends up being 3,700 to 5,500 square feet per dwelling unit. And that's really the, this is kind of the you're going, you're going model right here. This particular one shows one parking space in the front. It would include one parking space included within the building. The typical, or the, the looks for the detached duplex on that same lot looks for a middle housing is, is to the bottom right, this is about 1,200 square feet, two dwellings. The lot coverage does push to the upper limits, again, because you, you're, there's no incentive or there's no disincentive to go up. So lot coverage is, is about on par with what you have in the R2 zone. You just see a lot less square footage with these two dwellings as you do to your two typical townhouses. This also shows lot coverage that includes one parking space per dwelling unit off-street, rather than the requirement of two, which you have today. This kind of provides a little bit similar look. The, the following configuration really shows now three dwelling units, an extra off-street parking space. So, but that could be a three-unit configuration right there. If you stacked the front two, or you provided an accessory dwelling unit. Again, nowhere near the amount of square footage that the townhouse will provide in an R2 zone, in a much different look. I left this same three configuration in. As we start crossing over into R3, the upper left shows a three attached unit configuration. This is on a 6,500-square-foot lot, which would be the requirement for a typical townhouse. 5,000 square feet for the first two dwelling units and 1,500 square feet thereafter. Start pushing still now, once you get into R3, up to 60% lot coverage with bonus features. 4,700 square feet buildable area for two stories, up to 7,000 if you end up with three stories. Back down to our, our missing middle code, same number of dwelling units, 1,800 square feet of dwelling area. So this would be a 600-square-foot per. And this starts falling within the coverage requirements, but much less in the way of, than in the way of volume you would see in a townhouse development. Moving that into the 10,000-square-foot, this is what two R3 lots or two typical R2 lots, side by side, will yield. This is a five dwelling unit townhouse. Really starting to get some serious bulk in here, you're talking 60% over, over 10,000 square feet. So 6,000 square feet of floor area. I wanted to compare that to the, this is the detached cottage look for a three-flat or three, three dwelling units side by side with a single curb cut, pretty radical difference. Now, you're really starting to see the departure here between, and this, this adds a dwelling unit and reduces the, the coverage. Starting to see pretty significant departure from, from these, even though the density is higher, the bulk still goes down. This has a lot coverage of 47%. The structure themselves taking up about a quarter of the lot. The driveway, single car, single occupant, single space starts looking at more around 20% of the lot is dedicated to parking and driveways. The issue here becomes, and the architect team called out, these units are starting to become really small. If you start requiring the driveways in, they're, they talk about 640 square feet. They have stated there's, there's enough real estate here to support more dwelling or more foot, square footage. Would you want to consider moving that up to expand the size of these units?
And increase the lot coverage from 47 to some number?
Well, if you, or if you went up, yeah, right. There, there's, there's expanding it to increase the headroom for, if you expanded on the first floor, or if you went vertical, allowing that to go, it wouldn't impact the coverage. So in this instance, if you added, you know, 240 square feet off the middle here, does it become, become livable space? Does it become more, more attractive for someone who's going to purchase this thing? Some of the key questions that we left off, or we discussed in, in the last meeting, were permitting the porches in the front yard setback. Do our prototypes provide enough open space for each of the dwelling units? And are we looking at prototypes that are big enough? Will there, are, are these too small to be even appetizing to the, to the market? And will they be pushed aside? Or will they be, is the townhouse code so favorable that, that no one's going to even be attracted to this? So I like, liken this one to really highlighting some of those issues that we, that we've discussed. Again, this, this is a, the pretty big departure from what you see from our current build-out. You know, from detached units, smaller detached units, that is typically now favored by attached townhouses. The issue of parking. There's often, this is the conversation that, that we often hear of, living space versus parking space versus open space. What, this is the big tension amongst those three demands. Which one do you, which one do you pick? Or how do you reconcile those? Because they all take up real estate. So this is part of our, our conversation. And, and part of what I wanted to take from, from you all and provide to City Council is, what, what items should they be grappling with when it comes to developing a middle housing code? How, how does Planning Commission as, as a body that makes recommendation is, is one of the important synthesis and stakeholders and shareholders in this? You know, how does the Planning Commission provide input on this? What can you provide to City Council when they have this discussion? And how do we codify that? The next element, again, that we left off with was front yard encroachments. This is a picture from, it's actually from Creekside Development here in the city, on the west side off 30th. 30th is in the background here. And the reason why I picked this is because this is a, what a 10-foot front yard setback looks like. And I think we were just speaking about this in generalities. This is something I think has a pretty good, and I think is a pretty successful feel in terms of compact neighborhood design. This also shows the impacts of having zero curb cuts. Now, a lot of these have, this is an alley-loaded product, which is nice. But I think what you do see is the continuity of the streetscape. And these houses are generally pretty close to, to the street itself. This is where I kind of push back on our architecture team when it comes to allowing front porches, which you see here, to go even further into that setback. And I think I have another, I have another picture, this is looking the other way. It does provide that context of, this is how buildings engage the street. This is how we provide pedestrian-scale environments to not have them so far setback. But it's also where you want to be mindful of, of how close, how, how close do you to the street? How intimate do you have your, your personal dwelling space with the public domain here? And I think that provides a good illustrative on, on that conversation. Terms of open space, currently, open space is really required for conditional uses and some of our very specific developments. When we get down to single-family homes, there's really, open space is just regulated by, by the amount of lot coverage you can do. So it's assumed that whatever else isn't included as building, parking, or driveway becomes open space. In our commercial, or, excuse me, our conditional uses for residential in our multifamily, you see about 20% for the residential required, 30% in PUDs is required to be set aside as open space. And that can be in public or private. But this is really the, kind of the starting point of how Hood River and where Hood River orchestrates and requires this much open space. So when it comes to using this as a design or development tool, again, using this as to indirectly control the amount or the size of the development and also directly including a specific element or amenity. This is where, this is where our code stands now, really. These two, these two become the hallmarks of the legislation that we work with now and in driving home landscaping requirements. So with this, what, where does Planning Commission, when it comes to providing open space or landscaping, what input can you provide to council regarding some of these codes? What should we be looking for? What are the pitfalls? Is there consensus from, from the group on, on what we should be looking at? Because this is one of the items we heard from the public, as well as some of our electeds regarding, you know, concern about density increase, is we're going to increase the density. Do not forget to make sure that you're setting aside amounts for landscaping, for stormwater, for environmental purposes, and for community, just feel. Development of your community, the end product should have some amount of open space to it and some landscape architecture to it. And I, and I threw this in for Commissioner Irving, who I don't know if has joined us yet.
No, I don't see him.
This was, this is a, the idea of the infill site that he was referring to. The two units in the, shown in the bottom are really an infill in a single-family development. Is providing some compatibility between this more dense infill, which this is a six-unit development amongst the single-family. That's the missing middle kind of mantra, is compatibility in the scale and size of, of traditional neighborhoods. So this is provided on, on his behalf and stimulates some discussion from him. That's really my quick rundown of where you were and our hopes of providing some council input. Again, we're looking for some Planning Commission input on the issues that we talked about before. Looking for an opportunity, again, I'm going to take this to council and provide them an update on the work that's been done and some issues that we've addressed and/or have some opinions on. So that's, that's all I have.
Dustin, can you go back to, so is there a, is the three things that you wanted to get input on this evening? Is that what I, back in the beginning?
Yeah, this is a slow backup, particularly parking. The marketability question, which again, I broke down side by side at your request. Just what is, what is some of the R1, R2 products look like? And anything else that you, like, again, you, you have the packet and the information, the starter code at, at large. Is there anything else that, coming out of that, that Planning Commission feels like needs to be addressed in the final code?
Okay. So parking, marketability, and the open space, those three items?
Well, and then.
Kind of core things?
Yeah, and then seemingly small to that is the front yard setback, ready to purchase, so.
So I guess, why don't we take some questions or from, I mean, does any commissioner have a question on this material for Dustin? And then maybe we can go to the audience and then we can come back to deliberate and get our ideas out on the table. Any questions for Dustin on this presentation?
Yeah, I have a question. So Dustin, the lot coverage is not just a structure bill, but it's the, includes park, any paved area, is that right?
Any area dedicated to parking or driveway, those are, those are also included in the lot coverage.
Okay.
So paved, not all paved areas, so if you had a paved patio, we wouldn't include that. There are certain decks under a certain height that are also not included.
Sure.
30 inches, kind of a raised patio, if you will, that's also not included in the, in the lot coverage.
Okay.
Dustin, in that example you showed from Creekside with the 10-foot setbacks, were those, I'm vaguely, I mean, I'm kind of familiar with the neighborhood. Do they allow any encroachment into that with, with porches or patios? I mean, what we were looking at, were, were all those porches adhering to that 10-foot setback?
Dustin, you're on mute.
Yeah, those were all generally 10-foot offset.
Sorry, can you go back to that picture, Dustin? That was useful. So, but it is, so it is 10 feet to the beginning of the porch, right? As opposed to what we're talking about, which is in the case that we would be talking about, it, the porches would actually come in front of what this is showing.
Yeah, this is, these are generally 10 foot setback. There's a little variability there, but I think this is where I, I started having some concern about a six foot. I mean, if you're, if you're talking six foot in this example, you're looking more along lines of the blue planter for the porch. And that, that's, that's noteworthy. Again, this is a, these are all, these are about 10 plus or minus to the front of these houses or, or to the awnings or excuse me, the, the eaves and the gutters.
Okay. Okay. So it looks like fences and things are coming out to the sidewalk. But porch, personal space is all at least 10 foot, 10 feet back.
Yeah. And I think this is also a helpful example. We talked about fences, fences being less than four feet height and, and less than 50% opaque is kind of the, the picket fence model. The difference between a picket fence and its acceptability versus what would maybe a six foot fence feel like? If it came all the way out to the, you know, and I know we do have some front yard six foot fences. I think this is an example where imagine that being six feet tall and picket or not a picket fence. That is something I believe we would, we should be mindful of. And my recommendation would be to, to set that maximum height limit on that to avoid that problem.
Yeah, thanks for doing this. This is really helpful. We're just kind of see, see it in action.
Well, I think we were, we were out on site here and it just kind of jumped out as this is a real world, kind of a real world example of, of what this could be envisioned as or how it kind of looks in a Hood River context. So it really became, it, it became a good opportunity to maybe put this rather into a narrative in terms and numbers of this is what 10 feet looks like. So.
Remind me, so the, these, this particular road, do they have access to parking behind these houses? So they actually don't have even an alleyway. They have a road right behind them where they can access the back of the house to park. And yet they don't, they park on the street in front of their house.
Well, one of those is my car. So. Visitor parking. I think there's a couple of staff cars out there. They have a, yeah, it, I would consider it, it's, it's part road and part alley. It's kind of a strange, you know, mix between the two. It's over 20 feet wide. There's houses that front onto it. But they do have, they all, all their garages are rear loaded garages at this point. Also the street, you know, as we get into TSP coming right up, we took some street measurements too. We'll put that in context. There's parking available on both sides of the street. And this is also where curb cuts come into play. Imagine if each of these houses had a, had a front loaded access, you would have no parking out there or rare, rare parking. So.
Okay. Other questions for Dustin on the presentation? All right. So how about we take some input from the, the audience? I think we're going to need to ask anyone in the attendee panel, if you want to speak, raise your hand. See Thrive Hood River has raised their hand. So just be ready to raise your hand and we will promote you to speak, give you the ability to speak. So.
And I believe it's start, just for the audience, I believe it's star nine that allows you to, to raise your hand for our, for our Zoom power users.
All right. Looks like Thrive is, is talking permitted? If you can come off mute, go ahead.
Am I muted?
Okay, we hear somebody. Yep.
Great. Hi, this is Heather Straighton from Thrive Hood River. And I had a couple of questions. One, there is a number of middle housing types that weren't included on these prototypes. And I wondered if the city would consider those. So what are often called courtyard, I mean cottage or bungalow courts? You've probably seen a lot of those from like the 1920s and 30s. One story attached, often in like a U shape. And I can show you some examples of those. Also courtyard apartments, which are normally like two stories, often U shaped with a central courtyard. Four plexes, but attached and not built in the form of like four townhouses, but looking more like a single family home, but with four doors. And so there would probably be, you know, often, sometimes there's entries on multiple sides of the, the building. Sometimes there's a central hall with a staircase. And, you know, people take the stairs up, up to their units. So it seemed a little bit like the prototypes were towards being able to be sold as individual units, not as much prototypes that are amenable to rentals. So just wondering about adding some additional prototypes that would be good rental structure. So like a fourplex or a bungalow court. I mean, yes, you could do a condo ownership program, but those would be typically things that you would build and then, and then rent. And then another thing, I knew you talked about possibly doing ADUs with duplexes. We have a lot of three story townhouses with, existing with a garage on the ground floor, but also living space on the ground floor. And I've been to a number of them that could easily be converted into a studio apartment plus a two story dwelling unit. Either the ground floor be a studio plus the garage and the two levels above that be a larger unit. Or the other way around, the first two floors be the larger unit and the attic. The third story be an individual standalone unit. So just another option for an additional kind of type. And then finally, I wanted to thank Dustin for including that really good illustration of parking and versus living space. It, that I think it's like one of the best illustrations of if you require two parking spaces, how much living space you're, you're giving away by doing that. So that's all I got.
Dustin, do you want to talk a little bit about those potential U shaped cottage, I mean, attached?
Yeah, we don't have.
Configurations?
But there is in your, in the packet that, not in this presentation, but in the packet, there is a three, we call, I call a three plus three, which was the three attached units side by side. We looked at them. And I can't have a quick recall on them, but there, there is a, that's more of that courtyard cluster that provides that central space. I think we talked about more and if you required a single driveway, you could serve it from the inside. But a courtyard, if you, if everyone had parking, results in two curb cuts on the outside and it starts giving a very different feel to it. That was also as much of that configuration as it was the impacts of parking. Then in terms of the, you know, the, the ADU in the stack or the, the four flat is also known as the mansion home, built in a single family configuration by its look, but it just has multiple units built into it. So. They, you'll often see that in some of the new urbanist and infill products where they start mixing housing types. You'll have some rather large and ambitious single family homes. You'll have on volume and mass, similar product, but it just has multiple units built into it. Stapleton Forest City Development, pretty well known for their, they refer to it as the mansion, the mansion home. So four units, one, one structure.
Do we have a product type that would allow that with what we're proposing here? Or is it existing?
I don't have a prototype built up for it, but if you wanted to, if that became something you wanted to push for, that could be a, a four flat prototype would be possible.
Dustin, it sounds like a lot of those provide for a, a more congruent open space. Is that the primary benefit there? I mean, I'm just picturing in my head what that would look like. And it seems like a courtyard would be a better use of open space in those configurations.
It, it's a little, I think what we noticed is it's the idea that it kind of turns the users in to a single unified common space in the middle. But then it kind of renders the outside, kind of the outside versus the other way. And you kind of have, you know, it's, it's just two different things, I think. It's on the, a solid driveway. It's all unified and everyone faces out towards either their neighbors or more than maybe their own private space. And I think that's where, they're just different. So it's hard or, you know, or private. They're just a little, it's just two different.
Okay.
That's where Commissioner Ramey talked about the idea that this is a promo, you know, when you're turning in, this is kind of that common promotion of community space, common space rather than again, individual space facing outward.
Yeah, I, can you, tell me if I break up? Again, I have internet issues. This is Megan. I turned my video off. I was missing that product type from your presentation last time. I, I think I, I know exactly what Heather means. Cause I, I think there is one famous one in Portland where it's one story U shaped. And it's just done in really great classic Italian architecture and everybody faces in. And it's just a beautiful, I would, they're all probably between like 500 and 750 square feet units and it's great efficiency of space. And it was probably very affordable back in the day. And so I'm missing that prototype. And then Heather also talked about the two story version of that. And that reminds me of Melrose Place. If you guys ever watched that, where the pool is the common courtyard. Yeah. And then I grew up in, in, in Madison where it was famous for all the two, three and four flat homes. And it was great because we shared a common porch on the ground floor. And then, and then, yeah, the person who lived on the second or third floor had to walk up, but it was a great, it, it kept the, the street facade. The street facing like, like a nor, it looked like a normal home. So I would love to see those product types.
And Dustin, is there any downside to having more types as options?
No, I think it's just a matter of units and time. I mean, getting, I don't think it hurts to have more of them. Just a matter of how, how far spread do you go? Do we start dialing in some key parameters? Or I think that's just the philosophy. I'm trying to, some of these nailed down doesn't mean we shouldn't or can't go back to do more too.
Okay.
Well, and that's the sense I get is it's, we're not asking you to, you know, spend hundreds of hours developing presentations. I think it's a question of how do we frame the code so we can get more of this density and more smaller units without, you know, without losing the flexibility of, of the variety that I think everybody's after from everything from these cottage courts to the old fashioned, you know, tri flats or whatever. So that's, I think that's what I see as the question is, how do you write it to build in that, that flexibility?
Any other attendees from the public want to ask a question, make a comment? Raise your hand. We will promote you. Brian Tuie. Hey, Brian.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you.
Awesome. Yeah, that, I'm hearing a lot of super awesome ideas about things that can be done. It looks like this is kind of one of those challenges of trying to do a big, I think you call it omnibus regulation change. So I, I listened to the last meeting and the word sustainability kept popping up. And parking is a big part of that. And Hood River has a known, long time systemic parking problem that continues to worsen. And I think that we can probably refer to that as an infrastructure challenge. And it's not sustainable without other changes that, you know, aren't being considered as part of this. And I think that reducing parking requirements for infill development in particular will be harmful. Specifically, you know, cycling routes and safety. Longtime cyclist and cars parked on the street are a massive threat to cyclists. And there's no reason to add more cars to the street when there's an alternative. And you, you have one here as you're building these regulations. You know, some neighborhoods in Hood River, for those of you that have been here for any period of time, know that we already have severely compromised parking availability. I'd give you examples if you want, but I think you probably know some of the places I'm talking about. And, you know, since we have examples of what happens when you do things a certain way, this discussion, starting point really should be at the number of spaces that are required now, not one, which is already a, a pretty big reduction. You know, I think it's going to have pretty negative impacts. So, you know, I think that, you know, reductions in, in parking, you know, well, that's a nice idea. I don't think that's going to make sense until we have a useful public transportation system. You know, like what, what exists in cities for which policies like this, you know, were designed and, and for met, and we just, we just don't have that now. And, and I do think that Bill Oren was correct last week when, when he suggested that people will buy whatever is available. So I think that you should probably consider making the units that are going to be built in the short term sustainable, which means including parking infrastructure with those units. Fact of the matter is that people live here have cars because they need them. It's just the nature of where we are. So I think reduce parking requirements are a safety issue. And there are also a general liability issue and we shouldn't offer ourselves up as some sort of an urban expert, experiment when it's not necessary. So again, I think that some of these ideas that are, that are being talked about, like the reduced curb cuts. I mean, I think that's awesome, especially from a bicycle safety standpoint, for example. You know, these codes are overdue, but please don't doom it to failure by taking shortcuts that are going to cause neighborhood acrimony and, and confusion when it comes to building these things. Thanks again for, for all your work and allowing me to throw my two cents in.
Hey, thanks, Brian. I see Jackie Brown has her hand up.
I just.
Jackie, your life?
Hi, everybody. I just, and thanks for your time. I just wanted to say the ditto what Brian just said. I think the parking, reducing parking requirements is, is not a good direction to go. I've seen it in, in many places in Hood River where people move cars around because they don't have the spaces in their duplex or, or single house parking spot. So I just want to tag on to Brian and on that note.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. Anyone else? All right. Okay. So Dustin, back to you. So there were four issues then, front yard, marketability, open space landscaping and parking. So we're looking for input in those four areas.
And I guess the, the marketability part, I would kind of turn, maybe phrase that as, okay, do you, you have marketability? And also I guess there's the conversation of this volume, building volume to dwelling units. You know, if you're increasing the volume, but increasing the dwelling units, is there, is, is that something that everyone, that are not, is there a consensus or feeling from the planning commission? If you're building smaller units, is that something that is generally acceptable? And at what risk or at what benefit?
Right.
But it, it does, it, it's right there with marketability too. If these units are not marketable because of their size or because they cannot be built at a size to, to maximize the build out as if you would in a townhouse configuration, is there? as if you would in a townhouse configuration, is there, is that a fatal flaw? Is there a concern about that? Or should we, should we just do it anyway and address, address the townhouse or address it in other ways such as system development charges? Other issues outside the zoning code?
Okay. Do, how does everyone feel? Should we do a round robin, go around the horn on each of the four topics? Does that sound good so we can tackle them one at a time? And why don't we start with that one, the marketability? Let's just keep going with that discussion. So how about we just go around and everybody? And, and as I sort of understand it, as we looked at some of the drawings from last time, Bill Irving had, had mentioned, look, you know, that, that looks great on paper. It looks great as a diagram, but it'll never sell. And so then the question is, is, you know, how? What Dustin was just alluding to was, you know, we could, we could incentivize a smaller unit by, by reducing the system development charges. But that's really out of our hands. That's a city discussion. We need to stick to maybe planning commission boundaries, which is, you know, lot coverage and height and setbacks and, and things like that. As opposed to changing system development charges. But if we, if we build to the boundaries, as Dustin showed his diagrams, we could end up with some pretty large, large product, right? Okay, so how about we go around the horn? Who wants to kick us off?
And Mr. Chair, just let me know if you want me to queue back diagrams or code language, previous documents. I'll be happy to go and share those if you need those for points of discussion.
Marketability, any?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in. Because I feel like what we're really after is trying to add some different size options and specifically smaller, right? Because what gets built now is these giant things. And they're marketable to the developers. But I, but I don't want to forget about what's marketable to the population in terms of what the population is able to buy. So I'm, even though we aren't able to affect system development charges, that would be my preferred route is to somehow incentivize smaller units on these lots, which are marketable to individual homeowners as opposed to maybe the developer's first choice. But incentivizes them through some other mechanism. Because I think we just have avoided these smaller.
Yep.
I, I don't want to say affordable, but relatively affordable.
More affordable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sort of, it's like a two-part question. I mean, it's like, what is marketable to the public as Sue pointed out? And what is marketable to developers? You know, I, I won't pretend to, you know, understand what is going to work for developers. But I don't think we should shy away from the smaller units. I mean, some people say it's like, oh, will anyone buy a 500 square foot or 600 square foot unit? I think that is exactly what's missing from our community. And I think a lot of us have probably lived in, you know, 600 square foot apartments. And some of the best examples of these cottage clusters and things. I know I was looking at one in Austin, you know, that Austin Alleyways has been super successful. All their floor plans are like 575 square feet, 600 square feet. And that's been highly, again, it's a city. But I mean, to the point of living space, I think, I think that's very successful. So I, I guess where I, you know, this is where I think Dustin can, can kind of help guide us in terms of what is the best way to write the code to get that? And, and how do we get, you know, developers on board?
Yep.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that I think there's a public market for that.
Maybe you're.
Sorry, I had a quick question. Or, well, I really wanted to point out or go back to Heather's question about, are we hoping to make these rentals or for people to actually buy? And my understanding is we were kind of hoping for a mix and kind of let the market decide. Is that correct? Or are we really trying to aim these for one or the other?
I think this is set up to, to allow the market to decide, be it rental or be it purchasable. I think the condo ownership has become complicated as of late because of condo litigation law. So that's one of the reasons why we avoided some of the stacked product. Because I think there is a really, we're going to see a real, maybe it's why it's not prioritized. Because we'll see more of an appetite for purchase or opportunity for purchase and homeownership on a smaller house if it has fee real estate attached to it. So like the townhouses, they're started as duplex. Vast majority of them are divided in half and become a townhouse. Because you can purchase it outright as fee. I think the way I've thought about this is not having the conventions of lot ownership drive it. But thinking about what will, what, if somebody wanted to do a duplex and have it detached and remain on one lot, you can rent one. If you wanted to divide it in half, it doesn't make it any more or less dwelling units. And to have that convention have at least flexibility there, so. And I think what, just to help fill in Bill Irving's statement was, anything in Hood River is going to sell. I think that was his statement.
Right.
There was nothing, there was nothing that is not saleable. I think his concern was development community choose to do something else that maybe has a greater return on investment. So everything will sell. I don't, I, I don't think anyone has, I think the real estate market has stated that, so.
So, and just to follow up on that point, I think if the return on investment of relative profitability comes from these bigger units, there has to be a forced incentive to get things on par if we, we want them to be built smaller.
My two thoughts on this is, one, what do we want based on, based on what Bill said? Is that everything is selling? So who and in what do we want to attract to live in Hood River? I was in, what is it, Good Books, Bad Art on Christmas Eve? And, yeah, Artifact, thanks. There was a younger-ish guy who was probably, I don't know, young 30s, saying that he would love to move his family of three to Hood River, live downtown or, you know, near, in a, in a walkable area. But he can't afford anything more than $400,000. And he just wants something small and walkable. And so I think that's, again, where the trend has been going for a while is people don't mind trading out internal living space for external life amenities. And we have so many external life amenities in Hood River. It's like, you can do anything you want on the weekend here. So my vote is for, for incentivizing smaller, walkable, bikeable units.
Are we wise to incentivize it? Or are we better at, you know, establishing size and maximums?
So how else will a developer be motivated to build the smaller ones if they aren't incentivized to do so? Because otherwise they're going to build these bigger units, was my understanding of what Bill was saying.
I think the first answer to that is make it permitted in the code. It's a great incentive to have it built.
Make it legal.
That helps. I think that's the first, first obstacle I think we're trying to, to, to deal with. But then, again, it becomes, it does become a conver. How much do you want to incentivize that versus something that's large? Do you start going back and now that we've had the townhouse code in effect for, call it four, three, four years now, are the outcomes that are driving some of these economics equations and the community deal and development, are they the outcomes that the community is supportive of? And I guess that goes, so do we then address it in that respect too? That, that, that changes, this is too much, this is not a desirable outcome. We need a different product and housing type and make it more competitive that way. I think that's another item that is not outside of the conversation. I think it's good, I think it's good to, to circle back when you make code changes to see how effective that they are. These, this is not a conversation that just because this change doesn't mean it needs to be, it's sacred and not, doesn't require revisiting. I think that's, that's important and healthy. So looking at, in that lens too, again, the system development charges are one thing. The idea of how much overhead, how long does it take to return on this? Are there programs that the city takes to, to address that? Tap-in charges, housing charges? Does a thousand square foot dwelling, is it treated differently than a 2,000 square foot dwelling by way of hookups? Those are, those are in the kind of the housing affordability or housing cost toolkit that. But I think one, again, that's, that's a bigger conversation. But I think the idea that you all believe that we should be incentivizing smaller dwelling units, I think that's enough. I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's consensus on that topic. I mean, I think for me, you know, looking at what Bill was raising last time, I just worry that if we limit ourselves to lot coverage discussions, we will end up with, you know, two units on a lot that are as close to the property, as close to the setbacks as possible and 28 feet tall. And two boxes that just maximize space. And we haven't achieved the affordability that we're looking at. So I know we can't really, we talked a little bit about floor ratios last time. But I'd certainly like to look at a way that we can incentivize, or not incentivize, but it's kind of like, look, if, if it's a single-family home or duplex size that has a certain footprint, but then you go to three units, that those units have to be smaller and that the overall square footage hasn't, you know, essentially tripled because now you have three or four units on the side. So I'd love to look at the way of doing that. Okay, Amy, did you have anything else on that topic before we move on to?
I think the only thing is I'm just worried about not having enough rental options. That there's only developers choosing only to develop pieces of the property for people to buy and purchase rather than also ensuring that there's enough rental options out there. Because I know that's a big issue. And so I guess that's my only worry. But I, I think it's important to, to encourage incentivizing the, the smaller units.
Okay, what are people's thoughts on the front yard and why we lump in the open space landscaping? I think we talked about this a little bit last time, Dustin. Although seeing, seeing that image of Creekside made me think that, you know, one of the things about having a setback from the front of the street is that as you look down the street, you know, there's sort of a zone that we have built environment. Then you have green space and trees. And then you have, you know, roads and, and, and that looks good. And when we start putting porches into that, you, you start to break up that continuity. But what are people's thoughts about front yard, open space landscaping? What, what other specific information are you looking for around that, Dustin?
So the, the Creekside is, is basically what the current code would allow.
Yeah.
10-foot setback. So that would be following the current underlying zoning code. When the architecture team was looking at this, they, they, they did talk about a lot of these going with, allowing the front porch to go within that setback.
Yeah.
To six feet. It was something that I, I wasn't super comfortable with. I mean, it looks good on paper, but I think I wanted to bring some real world example on how does it feel when it's, or what does 10-foot feel like? And do you feel like you could cut that in half essentially? Because I, I think in, in plan view and in the, the ACO view that we've been looking at, it, it looks okay, it feels okay. I just, I, I wanted to draw it to your attention because it was something that, that raised, it's a big departure from us. 10 feet is not a lot for, for a city. It's not, we don't have a 20-foot setback unless it's for a garage. So it was just something that I felt like, and, and it's really important. This is the public domain. This is prob, this to me is probably the single most important aspect of, of how the neighborhood at a larger scale feels and is compatible. I know it may not feel that way to, to your neighbor in the side yard or, or rear yard. But this is kind of like, again, the idea of neighborhood and infill compatibility from a neighborhood scale. This facade in this area is just really important. It's really important for, to give that extra attention to.
Okay, what thoughts do people have on that?
I'll go ahead and start again, I guess. So last time we spoke about this, I was thinking that I did want to allow front porches into the setback of the front yard. But I've totally changed my mind based purely on those photos. And I have walked on that street many times. And even with the 10-foot setback, it's still, those houses seem like they're just right there. And it's not, it's not crowded. But it's, it's as tight as I would want to go. So I don't think, I've, I've changed my mind on that. And I really don't think we should have front porches extending into the setback. But I am wondering about the implications of that. You're talking about just the front yard setback, is that right, Dustin? And not, like if we have houses behind the street or behind the front house? Would those have porches or?
Yeah, so, yeah, the encroachment language, as it's written now, has kind of the general under what is permitted currently, that 15-inch setback. I think we just tightened it up a little bit on the side and rear yards because we ran into the issue of similar architectural features being included. Narrowed that to avoid having that confusion. That's what the rest of the, kind of the perimeter is guided by, by the current regulations. This front yard was just a noteworthy exception, big option to the, to that, so.
Any other topics or changes from last time?
Oh, I think, are we?
No, 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 sorry, on the same topic of, yeah, go ahead, Megan. Megan, you.
Okay, sorry, I was delayed a little bit.
Yeah, you're good now, we hear you.
So I've been thinking about the mix of private versus common space. And I think it's more important that there is a, so like, say with the, for more units in the development, I think it's more important to have like, more towards like an 80/20 ratio of common to private. And then for, say, a two-unit development to be more 50/50. And then I saw, I, Dustin might be able to answer this question, but the, the 30% open space is that.
PUDs, right? That was just PUDs, yeah.
Okay, what are, what are we shooting for?
I don't think there was a number. I mean, that's, that's what the code requires on a PUD. So it was more of a setting the standard. I don't think we're trying to hit a number. That 50% is not the magic. But I think if you look at what we're, what we're, what we allow, you know, up to in the, in the R3 zone, up to 60% is parking, you know, parking driveways, building. If you started looking at a 60% coverage, you know, there's 40% left over. However you divide it, be it walkways, be it whether you walkways. So there, it kind of starts adding up to be, all right, requiring 30% open space by virtue of a PUD or 20%, which is required for multifamily, is not out of line. It's not out of line with, with what we could do and maybe even more. But again, that is going to also be driven by parking space, living space, open space, that, that magic number, so.
Right, so I guess if I were to prioritize, these conversations are so intertwined. If I were to prioritize those three, I would say number one should be livable space and making the, making the, the units affordable or attainable. It's so hard to even get affordable now. And then number two. It's so hard to even get affordable now. And then number two is common or, common or private space. And then number three is parking.
Yeah, I would, I would exactly agree with Megan on that. I feel like, as she says, these are so intertwined. I mean. Parking is kind of the elephant because until we decide what we want to do with parking, that's going to sort of change the rest of this conversation in terms of. You know, what we can do with setbacks and everything. But I agree with her.
Do you, and do you have an opinion on the front porch question?
Um, yeah, I'm kind of agreeing with Sue. I know last week or last meeting, I was talking about like, well, why, why aren't we pushing this even farther? If these are smaller units, but yeah. I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure on that, but I, I did like the Creekside, I kind of agree with you. Ten feet seems like a, a comfortable amount. And if we start getting closer than that. Yeah, I think we do lose a little bit of that kind of green space, important neighborhood feel.
Yeah, and I think, I think I'm, I'm coming around myself to that too. Last time we talked, I thought. That wouldn't be bad, although I think I was worried. Once you start a little bit of porch into that ten foot zone, you know, what does it become, right? Is it a porch with a overhang and a balcony above with a hot tub on it? I mean, what does it become? And so I'm thinking to myself, you know, how do you, how do you stop it from being? You know, just a small encroachment. So I think I, 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 I like that Creekside. Sort of view of, of, let's say consistency of a, of a, of a bit of open space. All right, Amy, okay, so we'll go to parking next, but let's just finish this one off. Amy, any thoughts on the open space and front porches?
Yeah, so it's kind of a hard one. Um, I've unfortunately never worked for the Creekside Development, so I haven't had the ability to really kind of see what that actually feels like. Um, I do know different places that I've, I've been and lived in and where the encroachments of a patio or a. Port, you go pretty close to that sidewalk. It not only allows for a little extra living space, but it does allow for community engagement, which I always thought was nice. Especially in, in neighborhoods where that's, you know, that's the goal, where they want community to be involved. And having just that little extra space that does kind of go a little closer together does help. Create that feel and that opportunity to have those community interactions. Um, so I think that's. That's kind of where I'm feeling that if you're, you're already having these very small living. And spaces that allowing that additional area to have. Gatherings or to just be outside a little bit more. And they, they do offer space for kids to, oh, kick a ball around or. Even though having that green space might also allow for that, but it might also not allow for that. Especially if there is no landscaping that happens and then it's just dirt or wood chips. Which I've seen happen a lot. So I, I think, I think I would kind of stand by with what I said last week. That I think to that, I believe that six foot encroachment, I, I think that is. An acceptable one, just to allow for that additional living space for folks who are already living in a very small area. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, that was in the room. Who wants to kick us off on the parking discussion?
Well, I'll, I'll go on parking. I was really glad to hear both Jackie and Brian talk about that. Cause I, I feel the same way that. The, the amount of parking that goes on, on the street and people moving their cars from one spot to another right now is pretty challenging. So I hate to limit it. Any more than that. Another neighborhood that I walked through often. I don't know what it's called, but it's right off May Street and it's, it's. Young, young lane and thirtieth, you know, that area in there. And when I walked through there, it's, it's a, it's a narrow street to begin with and they all have single garages. But even with a single garage, I don't think anyone has ever parked in a garage in that neighborhood. And so they have one car in their driveway and then they all seem to have another one or two cars. On the street, which doesn't even have. Much street parking. I mean, that, it's just, I think, a mess, really. So anyway, I, I just think maintaining it at two spots. Is a good way to go.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay, I'll, I'll jump in. I think, I think, well, a couple of different things. I think first of all, Megan kind of hit the nail on the head last week when she said, you know, we don't know what the market demands. Because frankly, we've never let the market decide in this town. I mean, we've always, we've always forced auto. Ownership sort of down people's throats by the way we zone things and. I mean, I, I appreciate the issues with cars and I know a lot of people like cars, but I mean. And a lot of people have cars and have multiple cars. But I do feel like if our goal here is to create a new housing product and provide more options for people. I just, I just really hate the idea of baking in this auto dependency into the model. Because, you know, not everybody, just like not everybody needs a, a big house and a big yard, not everybody needs multiple cars and things. And maybe people don't want them at all. And, and I just, you know, I think with our urban growth boundaries. And our limited space and the city has talked about housing as being a number one priority for years now. I really think we're at the point where are we going to prioritize housing for people or storage for people's cars? And I think we really need to focus on housing for people.
Thanks, Tina. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we do need to prioritize housing for folks. With that said, I think we also need to. Encourage through other avenues, multimodal transportation, because that allows people to get out of their cars. So whether it's walking, biking or pellet transportation. And I mean, I, I do appreciate the concerns about parking. I know, I know it makes things tough. I think. I think the less kerbs is great because it allows for a little bit more parking. I do think there's probably some other things that we can maybe not in this discussion, but we can talk about how to make roads safer for bikes. There's lots of other different ways of doing that. But I think yes, right now it's important to prioritize housing options and making sure that people have housing.
So I will go, and I'm so sorry, I can't use my video. I feel like I'm hiding and it's, I know this is a. We like to call parking the third rail of urban planning. Cause you touch it, any politician who touches it just gets like vilified. One of my favorite quotes about parking is nothing turns a, and I'm going to totally mess this up, nothing turns a. Capitalist libertarian into a democratic socialist faster. Cause they, cause they want their free parking. So my proposal, I'm going to start with my proposal and then I'll give a few reasons why. I would like to see us adopt. Or eliminate parking minimums. At most point five parking spaces per unit. Four with a very big. Quantifier here or qualifier, sorry, four units that are within a half mile. Of a grocery store. I'm sorry if you hear, hear nailing in the background. A grocery store. And then I, oh, and a transit station. Because if a person can walk to the grocery store, they are less likely to need a car. And it also incentivizes development around grocery stores and transit stations or, or bus stops. I feel like that would be a good approach in starting this conversation. If somebody is trying to develop this product way off of like out on like Belmont. Past like, I don't know. You know, nearing the urban growth boundary, it's going to be harder to live without a car. I mean, you have an electric bike and that's pretty much all your car free options. So if somebody can walk to the grocery store, that's a good. It's a good way to start this conversation. So a couple of things I want to comment on what other people said first is. Brian. Talking about safety concerns in biking. I very much share this concern. I have been almost doored. Handful of times and it is one of the worst bike injuries and or easiest ways to die. Besides being hit by a large vehicle like a truck. Dooring is horrifying and. The way that you prevent dooring from happening is by design and specifically network design. Where you encourage people to bike on streets that don't have parked cars or. The parked cars are the buffer for the bicyclist. So I'm very much. I understand his safety concern, but there's, but there's design, there's ways to design. Those encounters out of it. And the second. Comment I want to. Address is ta, is Sue in saying. And this is my, this is where I get like in a downward spiral. We want more off-street parking. But we know that people aren't parking in the off-street parking. So what is the purpose of the parking requirements? So we have two off-street parking spaces. And people fill their garages with their stuff. And they have an RV and or, I mean, I've heard of a guy who has ten cars that he moves around. On our city streets. And so our streets are becoming. Like the storage unit, a free storage unit for these people. When they should be parking in their driveways and their garages. And so I don't really understand how the system is working. And, and lastly, I just, I want to see developers listen to the market, respond to the market without us getting in the way. I want, we've had fifty years of social engineering around automobiles and I think it's time for. Them to develop what they want to develop. And. Sorry, one last point is that if we keep putting in. Two off-street parking spots, imagine what that's going to do to our traffic. And how competitive parking downtown is going to become even more. That's all I'll say.
Okay, is that everyone? I think, I mean, from my perspective, I guess where, where I come down on this whole parking issue is that. You know, there's, there's a lot of people. Do I kind of go down through the list? Like there's people that tend to work up and down the valley and it doesn't seem. I, I don't know that our transportation network are ever really going to get to the point where people can get to all of the places up and down the valley. With public transportation. So it, it feels like there's a certain population that, you know, we're not going to get them away from owning a car. There's also another population that comes to come visit here, you know, as a resort town. They can't get here by train or airplane or, or bus. And certainly not bringing the toys that they want to bring. And so there's people that come here who will arrive with cars. And even people that live here who chose to live here. Tend to want to get out to the outside world with all of their toys. And so there's that population. It doesn't seem like we're going to be able to get them away from owning a car, right? And, and then there's, you know, the, the families that have kids that they're shuttling around to different things. So the net of it all is, is, you know, I, I, and I lived in New York and I walked to the grocery store and. I lived in Portland and I took the bus and rode my bike everywhere and, and I just have a really hard time with Hood River and seeing people going completely car free. Not that some people might choose that path and that sounds like a great path if they can choose it and their lifestyle supports it, but I just, I get a bit worried about. Well, I guess what it is, is if the cottage cluster occurs, right, with no parking built in. Because a developer is trying to maximize the size of the unit, all it does is go back to what Brian was saying, which is. The parking will need to occur on the, on the surrounding neighborhoods and we're just putting these cars. Out on the street, which then has this ripple on effect of making the streets feel like parking lots and certainly as a cyclist myself. You know, I, I tend to choose paths through the city that, that aren't places where people can door me myself. So I think I, I, I agree with, I think with a lot of, what a lot of people have said about, about all of this. It'd be great to have street pathways that don't, don't require, don't have parking so we can feel safe. But then we need to find a way of, of accommodating those, those cars somewhere. And I, and, and maybe letting the market decide is, is the right way that we can do this, but I can't imagine developers building. Zero parking. For developments, little cottage clusters with no parking on the side. So maybe we can let them decide and then maybe they, we can let them decide that if they're close enough to shopping and, and transit. But I, but I feel like we need to give them the flexibility to decide what they want to do. I think I said that last time, I think with the market decide.
Yeah, again, Mark, oh, sorry.
If I could just go at the end, I got a couple of questions, just follow up questions after you guys talk with us.
Go ahead, Tina.
Okay, I was, I was just going to say, again, Mark, yeah, I agree. I think a lot of great points have been made. But again, we're not talking, in this conversation, we're not talking about doing anything citywide. We're just trying to talk about creating a new product. And isn't there room in our community, you know, for one new product that maybe isn't so auto-focused? You know, I mean, we keep, we sort of keep. Creating the same problem over and over, you know, it's like we keep forcing people to have. To develop things with parking and then we keep getting more cars and more congestion and more parking problems. And so it's like. As a planning commission, I feel like, well, let's offer some different alternatives then, because we don't know. Maybe there is a market out there that. It's, you know, I, I guess I just, I think as a city, we really shouldn't look at it as necessarily our job to figure out how people store their cars. There are people that have boats, right? And they figure out where to put their boat. They, they park it at a friend's orchard or they get a storage place out. You know, outside of town. I, I just think we need to, to provide more. A greater array of options for people. And, you know, again, too, it's like, we're the planning commission, right? We're supposed to be planning for the future and the future, everything you read is, we're not going to need this much parking, you know? So I guess I, I hate to look at us looking at a whole new development option and then baking in the same old sort of. Sixties and seventies era parking requirements. I mean, we're going to have more car shares. We're going to have, you know, someday we probably will get Lyft and Uber here. So I think, Uber, so I think, so I think, I think we should be a little bolder with this. And, and regarding Brian's comments on bike safety, I completely understand that and agree with that. And, and I think Amy addresses that. I, that's a different conversation, but you know, there are ways that we can work on our streets to design, to design safer, safer transit for bikes. But, but I just want to make sure we're not, in the way we design this, that we're not encouraging. More auto use again. We make it, the city, we make it so easy to own a car and so to get around by car and so difficult to get around on foot or by bike. And I don't want to continue that.
I just want to add one thing to all that because I'm not sure that having adequate. Off-street parking is the same as encouraging vehicle ownership. I'm not sure there's a cause and effect there. I think people have garages and. They may not have vehicles right now, but they are really grateful for that garage because there's a lot of other stuff they put in there.
Electric bicycles, right? Where do you put all your?
Right, all the bicycles maybe, right? But there's a functionality there. But I just don't think. That if we say. You know, a half a unit or one unit. you know, a half a unit or one unit of parking, that that's going to decrease the number of vehicles. I don't think that will happen. And I think that the trend of the future is a little bit going away from private car ownership. But I think the bigger trend of the future is going to electric vehicles. Continued car ownership, I guess is another way of saying that.
Electric vehicles, which you want to, I think Bill O'Roaring had said last time, that makes it even more, he doesn't want to park three around the block from where he lives, right? He wants to park his electric vehicle in his driveway so he can plug it in.
Charge it.
But electric vehicles are, what, $40,000 to $60,000 starting? Like, how is?
No, I get that, yeah.
Yeah, how is somebody?
Solar panels used to be a lot more expensive too and they've gone way down and I expect vehicles will be the same. I mean, it's a relative, who knows? But.
So a couple more, Tina triggered some great things that I forgot to mention. One is that we're getting an electric car share soon, which will be great for people that want access to vehicles. I can't believe we don't have a car share yet. It's, it's so great for people that don't want the burden of car ownership, like they don't want to maintain or fill gas or anything. And it's kind of like Netflix for cars. And then the second is, I mean, CAT is, is expanding all the time with the transit service. And I think it's just going to get better and better. There was a couple of other things I went, oh, and then I know that Bike Share should be coming soon in terms of like the next couple of years. And that's a whole nother thing that makes it easier to get around. I had a couple of other things, oh, I know what I was going to say. Bike parking minimums, that would be great in terms of, another qualifier is that in lieu of two off-street parking spaces to provide two secure, covered bike parking spots. Because that makes a huge difference in, in owning a nice like electric bike and having a great place to park it. Yeah, I, I'm just in, in favor of a market-based approach here and, and letting, and letting them decide. There is, there is something to be said for why is city government storing people's, it's the only thing that we store for the public for free. I don't get it. If a woman buys too many shoes for her closet, she has to eliminate some shoes because she's responsible for storing them in her house. But, and if I buy too many bikes, I have 10 bikes. It's like a one-in-one-out thing, like I can't, I can't keep all these bikes in my garage. But for some reason, we let people just expand their, their, their personal choices out onto our streets. So, yeah, market-based approach for me.
Okay, Dustin, you had some questions? Comments?
Because I can't say, we need a garage for my e-bike in front of city council. I mean, there's a couple of things I, I want to, just generally speaking, this kind of goes back to the tension of open space size, living size. For this parking conversation, would you support increasing the minimum or the ceiling of the dwelling units to allow for more parking? Or to the contrary, would you support reducing the amount of open space required to allow for more parking? It's kind of like puts the values of parking. So we've kind of set a, a bit of a ceiling on the, on the dwelling unit size to keep them small. Would you increase that to allow for more parking?
What, decrease it to allow for more parking?
Increase the house size to allow for additional parking spaces. Or, so if you had a garage.
It wasn't detached in this case.
Or if it was detached, would you allow it for free? Or if it was attached, not count that towards the size?
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Or to the contrary, would you, if they, if one were to accommodate more off-street parking, would you allow the reduction of open space and landscaping? If that was a trade-off? Generally, this is just generally speaking, again, both these would have to be within reason, but I'm just trying to set like a value, going back to set, when push comes to shove. And I, I guess I'd take there's more of a, there's flexibility in a market-based approach. It's kind of the tenor that I'm taking away from this. And I'll synthesize, I'll kind of synthesize that, but I'm, I'm just asking this to kind of pull that through. Narrow you all in a little bit.
I don't know, Dustin, I'm having a hard time. Those feel like false choices to me. I don't, I'm trying to wrap my head around them. I would always choose more open space to a parking space and I would always choose more square footage to a parking space.
Now, this was allowing more square footage to a house to accommodate additional parking.
How would more square footage to a house accommodate more parking?
Yeah, I still don't understand that either.
Because you would have attached garage. You would, or you would allow more volume, more mass, more development in order to accommodate off-street parking on the site. So meaning, for example, if we have a, the dwelling unit shall not exceed 1,000 square feet, but for, you will allow 400 square feet of garage space to not be counted towards the ceiling of this development size. That would be, that would, that would allow for a larger development, a larger house, but that accommodated two off-street parking spaces. I'm just using that as, as a example.
Well, isn't the goal to have smaller housing units? So I would say, no.
But you would, so you would still have, within reason, so you'd still have smaller dwelling units than what is allowed by a townhouse.
Yeah.
Still, if you cap it at 1,400, it's still smaller than your current allowance. But it's just not as small as what could be, because you can't have, you can't have an 800 square foot house and 400 square feet of a two-car garage. That's just going to be a difficult proposition.
Well, yeah, it's, it's an easy answer for me because I, I, parking is at the bottom of the priority list. So I would say no to both of those.
So Megan said no, she wouldn't sacrifice, she wouldn't sacrifice the landscaping, open space to allow for more parking. Not trade-off, landscaping wins out. The housing, the value of keeping the size small, you know, it sounds like you said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't allow the size increase to allow for more. Smaller units is more important than housing cars.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat as Tina on that one, except for if somebody can turn that two-car attached garage into living space if they wanted to.
But they're saying requiring it, requiring that parking.
Yeah, no.
No, I don't think Dustin's saying requiring it, it's just the, it's almost like a density bonus. If you.
Oh, okay.
You can accommodate, because basically you're taking those cars off the street and putting them underneath your smaller house. And, and instead of, because I mean, frankly, I, I'm in this situation, right? Where the, I'm, the house that I live in is, is limited on the size that it can be and the garage is included in the calculation of the size of the house. But, and so Dustin is talking about essentially, you would essentially get a freebie in that you would be able to put your car to, under the house and have your smaller house. I mean, to me, that's taking a car off the street and, and putting it, you know, within the footprint of the house, it raises the house up, increases the, the mass on the site. But, you know, it doesn't sound like a bad trade-off if, all things being equal in terms of where those vehicles will end up.
If we had a street parking permit system, I would agree because there would be some kind of guarantee that somebody would actually park in their driveway or their garage. But absent of that, it's more convenient for people, people park on the street because it's more convenient, like over and over again, you hear this. I think I've told the story before, there was a epic Boston snowstorm and one of my colleagues went around a couple of days after because it was a citywide, all three cities, Somerville, Cambridge and Boston all had on-street parking bans. And magically the cars disappeared. And he went around a couple of days after and surveyed people and said, where do you normally park your car? And they said, on the street. Said, where do you, where did you park your car during the snowstorm? Because the plows needed to work. And they said, in the driveway. And, or they just like found a friend that had a parking spot. So they, they park on the street because it's more convenient and that's why they end up filling their garages up with stuff. So that's, that's why I'm not, if we had a street parking permit system, I, I might be a little bit more supportive, but we don't.
Yeah, I agree. I feel like in a lot of cases, this is an enforcement issue more than a zoning issue. I mean, in my neighborhood, I live in that neighborhood west of Full Sail. I have now walked by every day for the last three months, a van with Canadian plates on Columbia Street that has not moved in three months. And I mean, I know the guy who owns it, he doesn't, he's, he's in Canada. And, you know, no one has ticketed it in three months. And, you know, people just park it there because it's, it's easy and it's free and no one's telling them they shouldn't. So I think, you know, there are lots of ways to address it. And yeah, I think a residential parking permit system makes a lot of sense in terms of sort of figuring out how to handle that issue of on-street parking. But I don't think that, I don't think we should get in, you know, go down that rabbit hole and we're talking again about just a very specific little type of housing development. And do we need to make parking a big part of that or not?
Well, I guess, I just want to try to answer your question, Dustin, and say that I would consider more square feet to get that second parking spot. But I really like what Megan said about having the option to turn that into living space if someone wanted to. So that's where you get into the, let the market decide, I think. So in a cottage development, there might be some homes that had double, double-sized garage and some that had a single that would, you know, see which ones sell, sell the most. And that, and that, that determination will be what gets, you know, continues to be built in the future.
So if we're going to, that's a kind of interesting, because if we're going to require two parking spaces per, just for example, how would you allow someone to convert it if it was required?
Well, I guess I'm not saying require two parking spaces so much as have an option that you could put it, you could put two parking spaces in the structure. And I think, I guess that's all you, yeah, no, you're making a really good point. I'm kind of talking to myself in circles here, saying, oh yeah, I guess you only have to require one. Someone could do two.
This is called, you're the planner, you're the planner in three years and they want to convert their garage.
Right, right, okay.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to throw.
No, 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 you're making a good point.
All right, Dustin, are we? Have we got your?
Amy, Amy, I have two, two people who are, a lot, would be supportable of scaling to, who want to prioritize. So Amy gets to be kind of the, the facto tiebreaker here.
Well, um, so I think going back to the question of prioritizing parking or open space, I think open space should be prioritized. I don't think that should be taken away to you for parking. I, I do not think that two parking spaces should be required. I think potentially one, but I do like the idea of Megan's of making it kind of open for the market. But I would only want that to go up, if that makes sense. So I, I don't think it should be a detached parking. I think if you're going to make two instead of one, then the housing structure should just go up. And, but I do not want to require, or sorry, I guess I shouldn't say I do not. I, I don't think requiring two parking spaces is the way to go. And I think we should be prioritizing, again, as Tina and Megan said, we should be prioritizing the housing units and making sure that there's space for people to live. Did that help answer the question?
Help, helps me quite a bit.
I have one other quick resource for everybody to take a look at if they ever want to. The, is everybody familiar with Strong Towns? Yeah, I know Tina knows about it, but it's, I don't know if they're a think tank, I don't really know. They publish a lot of great blog posts on urban planning and it's all centered around towns being financially resilient and sustain, like environmentally resilient, or I guess more in terms of adaptive to future changes. But they have a great Google map on all of the towns and cities. They range in population size of places that have eliminated parking minimums in favor of affordable or attainable housing. And I can send that link around, but they, they vary, they're very varied in their approach. A lot of them call it, they eliminate parking minimums in community centers, in downtown cores, around grocery stores and amenities like I proposed. But it's a great resource to see like comparable towns. And then you can kind of envision like, oh, that's the kind of atmosphere that Hood River is or, it's a good resource.
Thanks. All right, Dustin, do you want to, is that? Any for tonight?
Yeah, I think that's, that's kind of the input I was looking for on some of those, those topics. So I'm going to take this to city council and just kind of give a, an update of where we're at with some of these pieces. And then on the 19th, I'll be back to you all.
Okay.
Will hope to continue the, well, not hope to, continue this on the 19th.
Okay. Do we want to approve the minutes? Let's go back and see what dates those are.
I don't think I received the minutes for, was there a packet that went out for this meeting? I got the Zoom invitation, but I didn't.
I think it was from last time.
There wasn't, and I had to check online for the packet.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The packet is online, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even look at the city website to get it, so. I will abstain then if you don't need me to make certain read them.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 21st.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 21st. We have a second, Megan. Sue made the motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Yep.
This is Kevin Labbertia, planning staff. Just wanted to mention, there are a couple of highlighted pieces in there. I believe Commissioner Price was absent and she should be noted as absent rather than attending.
I thought it showed that she was absent.
So did I.
Looking at that, yeah.
There's two, there's a couple discrepancies, but yeah, she is absent or what's that?
And what was the other one, Kevin?
There's a House Bill 2001 that's referenced and the year 2019 was, to help provide context for that. And it was highlighted because it wasn't certain that that was the year that it was adopted. Dustin?
Yeah, it would be good to cite House Bill 2001 because House Bill in 2019 has initiated, it was approved in 2020 this year, but we will have another House Bill 2001 eventually. So it's good to identify what, which House Bill 2001 it was. And it was the one from 2019, the legislature of 2019. So that's a, that's a good catching clarification. Because when we look back at these down the road, they're not, we will have another House Bill 2001 eventually.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes. Can I just say that the request is to update the, the two items? Erica Price being absent and House Bill 2001.
Erica Price being absent and House Bill 2001 of 2019. Okay, so we're good on all of that? And all in favor?
Hi.
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 That was Megan. Okay, and Chair votes aye. So motion passes. Okay, are we good?
Thank you all very much. We'll see you on 5:30 on the 19th. And we'll, we'll bring back some more information for you regarding the code.
And that's Tuesday after MLK Day, right?
Yeah, please. It is Tuesday, the 19th.
All right. See you then. Thanks for everyone's attendance.
All right.
Thank you all.
Happy New Year. Good night.
Thank you. Bye-bye.